Welcome to our school committee meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today is February 14th and this meeting is being recorded, so I'd like to remind you all to silence your devices. Do we have any public comment tonight?
Forty-three Stone Creek Road. I wanted to offer some comments on the inclusion of Indigenous Peoples' Day to the school calendar. You're going to be discussing that tonight, I believe. Is that true?
We're approving the school calendar tonight.
Yes. I just wanted to say, I think it's a, you know, many have said this, it's an excellent opportunity to provide a teaching and learning opportunity for our students and our teachers about a subject which I think would like to know more about, and there's so much all around us that this represents, you know, why is it called Lake Kachikwic and all of that. The other thing that I've been thinking about, too, is that it really, it's an opportunity for us to provide more examples of, like, our Raze philosophy, right? Respect, inclusion, we're trying to be inclusive. And it's really kind of a nice follow-on to the program that we, you all have been doing, the understanding our differences. This is, you know, another opportunity to understand differences, cultural differences, historical differences, all kinds of opportunities here for, I think, a really good teaching and learning moment, so I just wanted to put in my advocacy for adding it to the calendar. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Any other public comments?
Hi, my name is Mark Boer, Ten Heath Circle, and I'm also here to speak in favor of support of Indigenous Peoples' Day as part of our school calendar. I'm here as the town poet laureate, and poets tend to take a long-term view of things. We read poems that are 100 years old, 200 years old, 500 years old, and we find purpose and meaning in those words that speak to us across the centuries. And when I think about Indigenous Peoples' Day, I see that same long-term connection to who we are as a human family, that same long-term view, and it's a wonderful thing. So I don't see Indigenous Peoples' Day as giving anything up in our story, I see it as raising our view, lengthening our view, and connecting us to members of our human family who lived here. When you think about it, we didn't start farming here 300, 400 years ago, we were farming here 1,000 years ago, up on Academy Road, before it was Academy Road. We were fishing in the streams to Lake Kachikwic 2,000 years ago. We were hunting up on Wire Hill. We were here 3,000 years ago, us, our human family, we're connected. It's not somebody else that we're honoring or recognizing or connecting to, it's our human family, us. And so I think it's a beautiful thing to connect that way and think about it that way. It's a bigger and a better story. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark. Any other public comments? All right, seeing none, we will move on to our student report.
Hi, everybody. So, yeah, February break, of course, is coming up one more day, so we're very excited about that. What?
Do you want to do sports?
Oh, yeah, I guess we'll start with sports. Girls' track was, is the highlight of the last few weeks at the high school. They won the MVC championship last Friday, I believe, and they've had a really good year. They won the state relay title as well earlier in the season, and they're sending a whole bunch of athletes to nationals. So they're continuing to train, they're one of the few winter sports that are still training and competing. And, yeah, as winter sports are winding down, spring sports are going to start to pick up. There have been several meetings that are scheduled to happen or have already happened for spring sports, so as winter sports winding down, spring sports are right around the corner.
Additionally, I mean, today was Valentine's Day, so our school definitely got a little bit in the spirit. I know that Student Council sent out matchmaking surveys that we'll be selling the results to next week. That one's always really fun, though, and then thinking your class got involved, too.
Yeah, there was also Candygrams fundraiser today where we sold Candygrams for 50 cents, where you could send a Hershey Kiss to a friend, and it's a fun fundraiser that everyone likes to just receive candy in the middle of class with, like, personalized notes, so that's always a popular fundraiser.
Additionally, throughout the school, you could see that the sophomores had started putting up signs for their semi that's coming up on March 8th, so I believe they're going to be starting to sell tickets soon, so that's something to look forward to for them. Additionally, on, like, the Student Council track, Mr. Meehan, who's the Student Council advisor, has kind of started an initiative kind of within the council. He's really trying to focus in these upcoming months about improving, like, the school community. And so, as a council, we've started brainstorming different things we think we can improve upon or how we want to do it, just to improve the atmosphere a little bit more. And additionally, on Thursdays, he's going to be having meetings in his room in the morning where he's basically just going to be giving out character dares, which are essentially just a list of different things that you can kind of work on doing just to kind of enhance yourself and kind of the relationships within the school. I know last week it was, like, know the names of all the custodians and try to, when you order lunch, ask the lunch lady who's serving you, like, how's her day going? Like, if you don't know, introduce, introduce yourself, and I know that it would really be awesome if we could get some more people involved. Right now, we kind of have some Student Council members, but anyone's really welcome. And I know that he's also going to start trying to, like, the first Monday of every month, open the door for people, so we're just kind of really trying to do small actions to kind of improve upon the school atmosphere a little bit.
Yeah. Another cool thing that happened today was there was a field trip to the State House by a bunch of students who are interested in student activism and politics. They went to the State House and discussed with local legislatures about issues that mattered to them, so that was a cool thing that, I had some friends who went, they said it was a really cool experience. It sounded really cool. I know, like, they really looked forward to it, and it sounded like it was a really rewarding thing they got to participate in.
Also, something that happened today was they had the scholarship meetings for the seniors, and I know that I went to that, and I felt like it was really helpful, because even though the scholarships don't really, like, open until tomorrow, it was nice just to have a rundown of, like, what to do, kind of, I know that it's definitely looking at it, I was, at first, I was like, okay, wow, this is a little confusing, but it was really nice, just, Ms. Contine, someone else, like, walked us through kind of how to do it that way. Scholarships are nerve-wracking anyways, but going into it, you have a little bit of, okay, I know how to do it. Also, like, looking back, I know that we spent some time talking about the Health Expo that was held last week, and I know that I personally went to it, and I think a lot of people did, and it was a lot of fun. I think the emotional support animals were definitely one of the highlights, everyone really enjoyed getting to see them. I definitely think, at first, I was a little, like, at first, when I was thinking about it, I was like, oh, maybe, like, it being on the same day as the parade almost hurt it, but I was talking to one of my teachers, and they were like, I think it might have helped it, too, because it allowed for the teachers to kind of feel more comfortable with themselves going down with their classes, because you're still learning that day, but it's like you don't want to get too ahead of those who are missing it, school, so it kind of helped to allow teachers to be able to really convince their students to go down during times when they weren't doing too much.
Also, while, so while the seniors are looking forward to scholarships and college next year, the rest of us are looking forward to our classes for next year, so today was the due date for course selection for freshmen, sophomores, and juniors for next year's classes. That's really all there is to it, we just had to sign up for classes on Power School, and we had, we had to get recommendations from our teachers. It can be a stressful time for some students, but it's not, it's not too bad. It's, yeah.
Yeah.
That's all we have for tonight, so, thank you.
Thanks, enjoy your break.
You, too.
All right, it's time for our consent agenda and approving the minutes from last meeting.
So I will move that we approve the minutes from the January 31st, 2019 meeting as presented in the packet.
Motion made by Mr. McDevitt, second by Ms. Picard. Any discussion? Ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Trizzi?
Aye.
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 And aye. All right, our superintendents' report.
Great. Okay. We have a couple things, but I'd like to get the middle school folks up here to start. So probably about two years ago, when I was assistant superintendent, I had made a call to the ADL in Boston based on the Anti-Defamation League. I don't want to steal all of their thunder, they have a PowerPoint this May. And based on some of the discourse taking place in schools, not just ours, but across the Merrick Valley, across the state, across the nation. So just, the ADL peer leaders at NAMs provide practical, experiential, and hands-on training in their leadership roles as they assist peers to challenge prejudice and discrimination. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Principal Goncalves, Ms. Blaney, Ms. DeShano, and if you guys could introduce all your students, they're going to do a presentation on where this has come over the last year and a half or so, and where we're at. And I'm pretty excited. I don't think we've had this many students present in a while, so, so, welcome.
Thank you, everyone. Absolute honor to be here to talk about this amazing program, just to give you, let's do introductions first. So I'm George Goncalves, proud principal of NAMs.
I'm Delaga Perez. I'm a seventh grader at NAMs.
Hi, I'm Rebecca DeShano, I'm a seventh grade social studies teacher at NAMs.
Hi, I'm Michaela Blaney, I'm one of the World of Difference advisors along with Rebecca, and I teach fitness, fitness and wellness at the middle school.
I'm a seventh grader at NAMs.
I'm a eighth grader at NAMs.
I'm a seventh grader also.
Wonderful. Thank you again for having us. If we could go to the next slide, please. Oh, excellent, sir. I love technology. When it works.
The on button.
On button, huh? That's why my computer doesn't work in a blackout. All right. So just by way of background, Dr. Gilligan provided the background from two years ago when he first reached out to the ADL, and this past spring, right around the time I was hired, we needed, we had an opportunity to train two teachers to be advisors for this program, and a lot of the work going into the start of the school year had to happen prior to, well, prior to the start of the year. So we solicited teachers who were interested in doing this, and we were so proud and pleased to know that Michaela Blaney and Rebecca DeShano were two staff members who were very interested, because we couldn't choose two more capable, enthusiastic, and amazing human beings than these two ladies. Would you agree, kids?
Yes.
That's what I thought. Good answer, good answer.
Smart boy.
All right. And this summer, they went to Montpelier, Vermont, so far away that I think the people there shop in Canada for groceries, and they went through three days of trading, and they came back, we met in the summer, we put together some ideas, and we then rolled out the way we would recruit students to be part of this program.
I think this would be me. So...
Right button.
We, so we got an email from Mr. Goncalves and asking if we were interested in it, and so you click on the link, and it'll bring you to a Google form, and ask questions about yourself, and what you liked about NAMs, what you wanted to change, and so you filled it all out, you submitted it, and then in a few weeks, you got a reply, if you were in, if you were not, and then the next meeting was a few weeks after that. And the, the form was good.
Some sample questions are here.
So we had four peer training sessions, they were four hours each, mostly in October, and during those, we had a lot of icebreakers, so we would just get to be more comfortable with each other, and we discussed possible situations of bias and prejudice and how to resolve them. And on the last session, we walked up to the youth center and facilitated mock lessons for when we teach sixth graders, and af, actually, after February break, we'll be going into sixth grade classrooms, and we'll be facilitating lessons with them, and these sessions just helped us become peer leaders.
So since then, we've been having weekly meetings in Mrs. DeShano's room, something we've done, we've put together a culture quilt, which is where kids from, students, put things, that import things from their culture on piece of paper, and then we hung it up, put it together, hung it up in the lobby of NAMs. And then more recently, we've been practicing to go into sixth grade classrooms after a break, so, like, putting together lessons and basically utilizing what we learned in these training sessions, and then we even watched a couple Michael Scott videos from the office to learn what not to do.
We have accomplished many things throughout the time we've been, the, throughout the four-hour trainings and the time we've been doing this program, and one of them was we made a culture quilt for the school, which was every student, if they wanted to, if they didn't want to, they didn't have to, but they made a quilt, a paper that showed where they're from, and how would they like to be acknowledged, and how the other students can acknowledge them. And so with that, the other students made the same thing, but with different things, and we put it all together, and it made, like, one big paper just going around, and it kind of just made, like, a culture quilt, it made different cultures, different peoples' ethnicities on a whole wall, and it kind of just showed it. We had Andy come in, Andy was super cool, he came in for, for trainings, for trainings?
Yes.
For trainings, and he, he taught us oops and ouch, and the respect, what respect means to people. Oops and ouch is kind of just like, if someone says something offensive to you, you can be like, ouch, and then he'll be like, oops, which is like, well, I didn't mean it, for it to come out that way. And we have so many things planned for the future, like, right now, we're thinking of, like, a movie type thing for the students, and we just gave out the prizes for the people that did the culture quilt.
And then remarkably, they wrote a thank-you note to all of NAMs for letting them create a culture quilt to celebrate, so we should be the ones thanking the peer leaders for all of their work, yeah.
Did you want to talk about staff training?
Staff training. Oh, yes.
Sorry.
Staff training. So we had a representative from ADL, Danica is her name, she already came out and did a two-hour training, anti-bias training, and looking at the way we perceive things and how we interact with others, and she was scheduled to come out yesterday for the last hour, but we canceled that early release day, but we're working on rescheduling her. So we're, we're having Danica come back, also from ADL, to provide training for our staff, because not only do we want this training for our peer leaders, but we want this training for our staff, and we'll continue that training with our staff before we roll it out more into the school. We always train the staff first before we move on, because we're, we actually created a Raze committee recently, and we've been meeting, and a lot of our work is designed around providing training and SCL presentations to the staff, and then together, we're going to decide how we then roll that out to the kids. We want the staff well-versed in these ideas, how to have these conversations with kids before we roll that out. So things are going really well so far. Knock on wood.
All right, so what's next for our peer leaders? We have some exciting things coming up in the next few months. First, like Veronica had mentioned, we are going to have our peer leaders get into some sixth grade classrooms, and they're going to be leading some workshops and some hands-on activities based on issues that impact our school, and they really have been working really hard on, on these, so it's exciting to get them into the classroom. We also are going to be offering a social justice-themed movie day after school, everyone's invited, and the movie that we're planning on showing is Hidden Figures, which is about, if you haven't seen it, I actually have not seen it, so I'm excited.
Well, I have it on DVD. We can watch it as many times as you want.
But I did read a little, a little bit about it, so it's about three brilliant African-American women that at, at North End Soccer Association, I'm so used to saying that, at NASA, and just all the accomplishments that they, that they've done. I am so used to growing up on that. And then also, April 12th, we were invited to the youth conference, and we will take our peer leaders, and they will get a chance to meet peer leaders from across Massachusetts, and listen to some great speakers, and be involved in some workshops, so that's exciting coming up.
Yeah, and then so after that, our peer leaders also will get the opportunity to present to their parents, and any other parents in the community who are interested in attending as well, and they are going to lead a training for parents that talks about not just what they have done, but also what are the issues that they're talking about, what is bias, what is prejudice, what are microaggressions, how are they dealing with them, how can parents help their kids deal with them in school and outside of school, so we're really excited for that, while also be working on some type of Raze Week or other Raze-related activities. And in June, we're going to have a whole new round of peer leaders applying, which is really exciting, because anyone who's not an eighth grader, unfortunately, because they leave us, seventh graders get the opportunity to rejoin if they would like to for the next year, and then we get to train an additional 30 students, so, plus whatever, whatever students decide to stay on, plus that extra 30 will now be the peer leaders after, and we're excited, we feel like we've learned a lot throughout kind of the application process, and, you know, as we've been moving on the, like, through the year, we can really speak a little bit more for kids what the commitment actually looks like, so we're excited to kind of fine-tune our application process and all of that, and also more things that we will come up with soon.
Yeah, thank you so much.
The quilt, I actually think when I looked at it the other day, it starts, I think, on the eighth grade wing side in the lobby, it goes all the way around, and I think it makes it almost a Sims lobby.
We were close.
And there were quite a few teachers and staff members who had done them, too, and I thought that was really cool. To the students, what do you, what have you learned about yourselves as leaders? Is it what you thought this would be, you're tackling some really important issues at your school? Have you learned anything about yourself, or anything surprised you as a leader doing this?
I've learned that I can say so much more than I have. Usually, I'm not the quietest person, but when something does happen, I do, I usually say something, but like, there are some things that I usually just don't say, and now that if someone says something in school, I'll be like, hey, that's not okay, like, for you to say that was not right, and that's kind of what I've learned.
I've learned that public speaking is a lot easier than it seems, really, and that once you start talking, you just go straight through it.
When I signed up for this, I had no idea what ADL was. I think I was Miss DeShano, right? But like, I've kind of learned, like, what ADL is, and like, what, like, like, how to deal with certain situations, like, the training.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't really know what ADL was either, and same as Grace, I sort of just signed up because Ms. DeShano was an amazing teacher. And, like, not knowing what ADL was, we went into it kind of open-minded, and we had to, we, over the training sessions, we learned about all these scenarios and situations that happen, and how to deal with them, and now, like, if I ever see something, which I haven't yet, I'll be sure to speak out about it and tell whoever's doing it or whatever's happening to stop and reconsider.
Would you ever envision yourselves using these skills outside of school?
Yes.
Yeah.
What's been your favorite part of this so far?
Sometimes, like, sometimes missing the Raze.
To tackle these important challenges, combating racism and discrimination. Very noble. Must be a sacrifice.
So how many students are on this? I think there'll be 30 more that are joining next year, does that mean you do about 30 per grade, like, the seventh and the eighth grade, or?
So right now, we have 27 students total, so we started with 30, and then unfortunately, a couple of our students actually moved out of district, so they were no longer able to participate, and about, I'm thinking it was 11 eighth graders, and the rest are seventh graders. So our 11th eighth graders will graduate and won't be able to participate next year, but we will have the other seventh graders, and they get the opportunity, if they want, to participate again.
Okay, so you're trying to keep it a little even, but, okay.
And then our sixth graders that are introduced this year will then step up as seventh graders.
Yeah, we wanted to start it out with more seventh graders this year, knowing that when the eighth graders leave, we wanted to still have a robust program in place.
Right, especially in the beginning, having that strong foundation is great. Well, get two strong, well, four strong leaders, but two strong seventh graders, great.
A couple things. First of all, I love hearing about how much Raze seems to be reinvigorating at the middle school at the moment, through all of you, so thank you for that. We talk a lot about, especially of late, a bridge between the middle school and the high school, and how important that is to get kids ready to go from eighth grade to ninth grade, what you all are doing, this is high school stuff, that, the types of clubs, the types of activities, and thoughts that are going on, is what goes on at the high school as well, so you're really getting yourselves, and your leaders are prepared, you be well-prepared for that, and maybe you might want to extend a club like this and start one at the high school. So very exciting, thank you for sharing this with us.
Thank you.
I think one of the exciting things that you're doing is getting to know each other across grade levels, which doesn't happen a lot at the elementary and middle school level, but it happens all the time. When you get to high school, you'll have classes with kids of, of different ages, and clubs and sports and everything, and I know you do that with, with sports to some degree, but I think carrying that as leaders into the high school will be really great, because, you know, when you guys get up to the high school, and then the current seventh graders will be coming up the year after that, so you'll be able to welcome them and really impact the culture of the high school, which we just heard from our high school students how much they want to impact the culture and have, you know, kindness and respect and confidence in their relationships with one another, so I think that's great. I have the privilege of sitting on the BRC, the Building Respectful Communities group, which is all adults, but that talk about Raze issues, and it's been a couple of years that the adults in that group have been really excited about this opportunity for you, so it's really exciting for me to see it brought to fruition. And when George came to the last BRC meeting and was talking about the culture quilt, right away, our town librarian, who also serves on the Race Amity group, which is at the high school, said that they really like to have an art focus for that, and they've asked if the culture quilt can come up to the high school for Race Amity Day, which takes place in June. So you, you really are, you know, bridging the generations, bridging the cultures, bridging the relationships, and it's really exciting, so I'm, I'm really pleased for you, I'm glad that you've learned the things that you've learned about yourselves and about each other, and looking forward to seeing more great things.
Me, too.
And you're going to see them from these people, these are really great kids.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Guys, thank you. We're so proud of you, this is just remarkable work. We do know you have a lot of homework to do, and you have tests to study for, so you don't have to feel compelled to stay for the rest of them. While they're packing up, I'd just say I'm really proud when students like this take a stand to say something. It's not easy to do sometimes within a school, and to have you guys give other students the skills and arm them with those skills and strategies to navigate these difficult things, it's going to make a difference. And on this ending quote, Dr. Martin Luther King always used to say, it's not, in the end, it's not the words of my M. end, it's not the words of my enemies, I'll remember, it was the silence of my friends. And that's my big takeaway from you guys talking tonight, so thank you.
Nice work.
Thank you.
It's still you.
I know it is. Okay, so before we get to Mr. Grant, I'm just going to break it up. I know that Mr. Grant doesn't mind sticking around a few extra minutes.
What can you say about that?
You're always welcome.
So for the listening audience at home, I would just encourage everybody to contact legislators, you know, representatives, to just talk about the following. I met the other day with Shelley Berman, the superintendent from Burlington, Melrose, North Reading, all the local folks. And one of the components coming up is, right now, in the governor's proposal, and we talked a little bit about chapter seventy funding, Circuit Breaker right now is only being funded at sixty-eight percent. Every year, Circuit Breaker's, the last few years, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, has been seventy-two percent. And it's supposed to be funded at seventy-five percent. We've seen these proposals early on at lower numbers where they've come up to seventy-two, but contacting the legislators, the Mass Association of School Superintendents really recommend that, you know, to put that through. The other thing is I was talking to a few of the reps last night.
Oh my God, sorry.
Cake's ready.
And this is something Mr. Millian and I have been talking about, and I know that Christina and Tram are interested in, you know, we were talking about not only extraordinary relief when we get to that particular percentage around special education, but it would be interesting to really start thinking about extraordinary relief, including special ed. transportation, because that's a huge component. And that's some of the talk we had the other day locally with all the local superintendents. And then last but not least, you know, to continue to support the foundation budget review committee recommendations, although North Andover only saw that 1.1% increase, Jim and I did some work, Jim did the work, and, you know, we figured out, we had a big bump last year because of a jump in enrollment. Jim, what was the last year's number roughly? Was it five?
The increase?
Yeah.
Was it over six hundred thousand?
Six hundred thousand dollars. So although it seems really low this year compared to some other communities, we're still looking at those factors. But in the end, I think we stand with other superintendents locally to try to find the best way to fund education across the Commonwealth in an equitable way. And this year is really not different than many past years, despite the fact of all the news. It's just the fact, there's only two hundred million dollars more in the whole pot, which is only 4.1% increase across the whole Commonwealth. So really just an update there, but if you have an opportunity to contact, whether it's Bruce, Diana, Tram, or Christina, you know, the Mass Association of School Superintendents is interested in that as well.
Just, just to clarify, so Circuit Breaker is currently funded at seventy-eight percent. We want to ask our legislators, sorry, sixty-eight percent. We want to ask our legislators to fund it fully?
We'd like it to be funded fully at the seventy-five.
That's the proposal, though.
Yeah.
This past year was funded at seventy-five percent, wasn't it? Or seventy-two?
Seventy-two.
Past few years, it's been seventy-two.
The governor's proposal is sixty-eight. That's, that's the floor, I would say right now.
But what are we asking for? Are we asking for full funding?
That's a hundred percent.
Well, seventy-five percent is full funding.
Seventy-five is the max. Yeah, that's the full.
At seventy-five to a hundred percent? Okay. I just need to know exactly what I'm asking for.
And I think David explained, David explained the governor's proposal with his experience in the State House, that probably not much is going to happen with any of the other bills around the foundation budget and all this, because they have a ton of new folks up there. David, when do those bills, would they have to be filed by? Did you say the end of March?
Uh, no, 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 they filed, those bills have been filed already, but I mean, they're just getting started. The committee assignments just came out today, so you get two new Ways and Means Chairman that every single bill in both branches go through those, those committees, so I think it's very unlikely they'll develop, accept a brand new formula prior to the budget being done. The budget's going to be done by, the House will do their budget in April, the Senate will do their budget in May, and it's very unlikely they'll get to that, so hopefully we can just build upon the governor's number, which is the goal, I would say.
Yeah, and I'd say that's what we're advocating for, and that's what the Mass Association of School Superintendents is advocating for.
I think it'd be helpful, though, talking to the legislators, what, you know, right now it's sixty-eight percent, what does that mean to us? What's seventy percent mean to us? What does seventy-two percent mean to us? I think that is something that our legislators can really, you know, sing to, even to.
Right, so the difference between sixty-eight and seventy-five percent is about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
To the town.
To the town.
To North.
Directly to the school department.
I think that's, that's the goal, though. You know, the realistic goal.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five thousand.
That's what I thought you said. All right, and secondly, if anyone hasn't had the opportunity to participate in understanding our differences, I know we talk about this a lot, maybe the most re-energizing experience I've had in over two months as superintendent. I was out at Sergeant last week in Holly.
Thompson with Helen.
Thompson with Helen, but at Sergeant, I got to teach, and it was on the deaf, the deafened and the hard of hearing, and those are the appropriate terms, as I learned. But it was just amazing that the work that these folks are doing, and I actually think it was a better, I mean, it was a great experience for the kids, but I think adults would enjoy it just as much and love it just as much. And it really makes me excited and hopeful, like these kids that came tonight, you know, you can go to Dunkin' Donuts, people say kids these days, but I'm feeling very, very hopeful about the kids we have and the kids I interact with as the leaders and future leaders and proactive citizens of the Commonwealth, because they're pretty special. Want to add anything about what we, that day, Holly, it was?
Great as always. Such an easy, easy volunteering opportunity.
And then just last, for the viewing public at home, I appreciate everyone's patience the other day with the snow, so those factors that go into the snow, you know, are safety number one, and certainly we're always thinking about the, you know, working families, if we can get there safely. And as always, if anyone feels the weather conditions aren't right for their child, they'll have an excused absence. But I think we lucked out. We did the reverse of what many of the other communities did. They, they didn't get out early the day before, and I think that worked out well. And we were lucky with just the slush and no ice on the next day. So I know some people always ask, I might even actually post a letter of how we do this, and when possible, you know, I'll, I'll send an email out to folks at home so that they know, you know, and then I'll tweet that information as well.
I think it's really helpful that you are telling people the night before, look, this is going to be a morning decision.
Yeah, you know.
When you can make it at night, it's great to make it at night, but knowing that we can't always do that.
Yeah, and that's the thing, I mean, you know, in nineteen, up until nineteen seventy-seven here in North Andover, they blew fire whistles on Davis and Ferber, three blasts where no school, seventy-six or so. But, I mean, it's, you get a email, you get a phone call, it's on fourteen stations, it's on the web, and then sometimes I get a call and the parents say, oh, I was only notified nine out of twelve ways, you know, it wasn't on the station. And I just think to myself, you know, when we grew, when I grew up, and I can't speak for the rest of you, you know, it was always a morning call and I listened to WCCM and Bruce Arnold and...
God rest his soul.
Yeah, God rest his soul, David. And it's, you know, as much as I don't like to wait till the morning, you know, our protocol is to make a decision by 5:45. I always try, I always will try to make that decision by 5:30, I think, there's no difference between 5:30 and 5:45. And then I typically tweet it around four, 5:20 and then get the information. It seems like the moms get that information out pretty quickly. So just, that's how we do it. We didn't get a lot of complaints at all.
I think it worked out well, Doctor, and the notification the day before, switching the half-days, the professional development day, I think that worked out well.
Yeah, and just one last note, if we get in school and it really starts to snow, it's not something we'd be likely to dismiss early, other than a little bit, because people remember about eight, nine years ago, we had kids in school, so seven, eight, and nine. I know I was in a conference and the Thompson was, I wasn't there. I think Ms. Marks handled the dismissal.
And you get all the early release phone calls done, and there were lists that didn't exist, it was allians on deck, and it was, it was pretty chaotic.
And it was really, like, I mean, I didn't have a cellphone. I know my kids were walking home to the neighbors' houses, like, I mean, I was driving home and I was like, hey, there's kids walking down the street, that minor alone. It was, it was a different time, so I really appreciate the change.
And we try to balance enough information, but not too much, because once it becomes too much, the expectation can be a little bit overwhelming about every little piece. I mean, it is New England, a couple inches of snow, I think we can handle, and the cold, for sure, we can handle. So that being said, the last piece I wanted to say, I was speaking about use of social media, is this week, I work really closely with Rain in the middle school principal around, a rumor going around on social media at the middle school, that not only wasn't it anything that happened, it was actually just a rumor. I think there's a lot of things that could have been tied into it from other communities and locally. To make a long story short, we ended up sending, George ended up sending a letter out to parents just to quell that. And I would just remind everyone, certainly if anyone, any parent ever has a concern about a safety issue, or if there's something happening at the school, A, call that school and ask for an administrator, so we can know. Or B, call the police department, because we, we have offices in our school, we work closely with them. It, it worries me, you know, not to be judgmental, but it just worries me. Some parents said that it's worrisome to them, you know, when folks may perpetuate a rumor or have a rumor go online for three, four hours, but no one contacts us, or no one contacts the police department. So when there's serious issues, we want to know, and there was, you know, absolutely nothing to this. The police were involved, I mean, it was, wasn't even an alleged incident, it was a rumor that was just simply not true in any way, shape, or form. So I just encourage people, parents, if you have a question, you're worried about anything, call the school, ask for an administrator, because then we know and we can involve the right folks, so.
Thanks. Don't believe what you see on North Andover Moms as you try and say.
No, I'm just saying, I...
I'll, I'll, I'll say it, I know you don't want to say it, but...
No, I'm just saying, you know...
Ridiculous stuff gets circled on a lot of social media sites, and it's, it's, this was the most ridiculous thing that happened this week, so.
No, I just worry that it causes undue stress for, for parents or kids when, you know, it's something that, if someone's actually worried about anything within our schools, call the school.
Yeah.
Ask for any administrator, you know, call the police department, those types of things. It just, it makes more sense that way.
Of course.
And then we can tackle it. So, that's that for that. Mr. Grant, with our mid-year technology use update.
Can't teach us how to block North Andover Moms from everyone's feed?
Unfortunately, we can't. So yeah, thank you for having me tonight. I called it the spring update, because I'm hoping that spring's coming soon. And actually, before I start, to follow up on what Mr. Gillen was talking about with notifications and how it's being posted everywhere for, like, no school announcements, so we're working on also tech, text messages as well, adding that to the system and actually being able to send one, like, message out that hits your phone, your email, text message, it gets posted to Twitter, and also gets posted to the website all at the same time. So it's a, it's one single, like, when he does a no, no school announcement, it gets posted everywhere at the same time.
Is there a way to combine phone numbers too? So if you have multiple kids, you're getting multiple calls.
Well, we do, we do, we do skip duplicates, so if, if it is a dup, if you have three, three children, we only call the one time. But you may have multiple phone numbers listed, it may call your cellphone, it might call your home phone, so...
Oh, it's calling our home phone twice every time.
We get, we get it twice, because we get the staff one, plus we get...
Oh, that's why.
Yeah, that's...
Plus the emails.
So that's probably, probably what happens.
I just get it once, because the school's busy.
And I would, I would just say that, you know, I've talked to my, this is something we're going to put on the principal's agenda, you know, we'd like to make it systemic. And, you know, it's probably something that, you know, we'll continue this year, we'll look to next year to have what's in place, but we also don't want to overload people with information too, in the particular ways, because certainly, you know, there's a myriad of ways. So we're going to put it on there to see what principal thinks works best and go for there, so. Go ahead, Mike.
All right, so I'd like to just start with tech support and just a quick update. So last year at this time, we had about thirteen point six, six tickets per day. This year at about fourteen point seven. It's about the same, a slight increase, not a huge difference. And just to let you know, to the vast majority of tickets that are submitted are how-to questions, not anything that's like wrong or broken, and you might, and you're going to get the, like, the laptops broken, or I dropped it, or whatever, but the vast majority of tickets are teachers and staff looking for help in how to implement technology in their classroom. So that's, that's the vast majority of, which is nice, because we're not at the point where we're just, like, trying to solve every little technical problem, we're in the classroom and helping teachers with integrating the technology with the, with the students. And also at any time, if you have questions as we go through the slides, just you can stop me and, and, and ask any questions you want. So next, the district website. So Hillary is, is working on the website, we're responding to feedback that we're getting from parents, from, from, from staff, and she's done a great job updating the website, making sure everything is, is updated as much as possible. We are looking at continuing with the Google Sites, and the new version has not come out yet, but Google has basically come out and said that they're going to be taking all of the, they've, they've listened to all the responses from people and the requests, and they're going to create the new Google Sites that is a robust platform for large companies, corporations, schools, so that it can handle a big website like ours. So it's good, they're going to start adding all these features over the next year, and they'll continue to support the old one for, until the end of 2021. So, so far it's working, it's free, it doesn't cost us anything, so it's, it's a, it's a nice, and it integrates well with all of our other products. So they're also going to include vaults, which basically backs up, anything that gets put on the website is going to get backed up and we can recover it at any time. So if, if a page gets deleted, we can go back and recover that page ten years in the future if we had to. Image carousel, so similar to what's on the front page now, which is a, is something that Hillary put together, will be built into the new version along with all kinds of other new features. So we're going to continue to, to move forward with Google Sites as our website platform. New student registration, so we, we made a shift this year to use Google Forms, which is, the middle school is talking about using Google Forms to fill out their request to be on the ADL of that group. So we are using Google Forms now for the new kindergarten registration, so that went live a couple, what, February first? So February first, and as of February first, we have over a hundred and fifty registrations already for kindergarten. So we're using Google Forms for parents to be able to register. We used to call it pre-registration, but we're just calling it registration, because it's, we're collecting a ton of information. It's really not a, a pre-registration. So we're, we're using that, yep?
Do we have any comparison for how many registrations we had at this time last year? Is that more or less?
I think it's probably about the same.
About the same?
Yeah.
So it hasn't deterred anybody?
Nope.
Mr. Grant, so, excuse me, I know one of the things that you have to do when you're registering is this form submission, so...
Yep.
Excuse me, do you have, does it have the ability to upload documents, or is that not there yet?
Google, it's, it's not there yet, and it is, it actually is there if it's an internal. So if, like, if they were already had a North Andover Google account, you can upload documents using your North Andover account, but any outside registration, so if you're not using, if you're not logging into the Google form, it won't allow you to upload any documents. But we're, we're not there yet either with the registration process, so the parents are dropping that information off here at central office for the kindergarten registration.
And with the schools, I mean, one of the components to it is we put in that pretty strict residency policy.
Right.
A couple of years ago, and, you know, that's a paper process at this point with original documents, so.
Yep, and the kindergarten parents, once they register, they get an email back saying that they've registered, and also a link to their kindergarten screening appointments, so they can make an online appointment for kindergarten screening. It'll send them an email two days before, reminding them of when their appointment is so that they, they remember what their appointment is. So they, and they can actually go online and change the appointment and, and do that. So there's a lot of, a lot of features that we're adding that hopefully making it easier for parents to, to register for kindergarten. We also, I switched over the athletic registration to Google Forms as well, so all the... We also, I switched over the athletic registration to Google Forms as well, so all the spring athletics are being ready, are going through Google Forms.
I just did that last night, I didn't notice any difference, so it was very seamless.
Yep, yep, so it was the same, I basically took the same questions and just put it on Google Forms. And it's, again, where, if we can move away from Formstack, which is what we're currently using, it's a paid product, if we can move it over to Google Forms, which is free, and it's integrated, saves us some money. Google and Chromebooks, so currently we have a little over twenty-eight hundred Chromebooks district-wide, for staff and students, which is an increase of about twenty-three percent from last year. And, what we're going to be doing this summer is, any Chromebook that's listed on Google's site as end-of-life, so EOL, is going to be replaced. So we'll kind of keep that replacement cycle going. And then, the ones that we do replace, we'll take the, the ones that are still actually in decent shape, even though they're end-of-life, and we end up kind of moving those to the kindergarten building, so the kindergarten preschool. And that's kind of the process that we've been going, going through. We currently have almost six thousand active Google accounts that we maintain and keep track of, and four hundred and forty-five active Google classrooms, which is an increase of twenty-eight percent from last year. So, at the beginning of this year, we automatically created Google classrooms for every teacher and student, and on a daily basis, we update every Google classroom with the correct student. So if a student moves into a class, it automatically gets updated, so teachers don't have to maintain that, add students to a class, so it gets done automatically. It's based on our student management system, Power School, is tied to the Google classroom, and we're able to sync all of that up, so that it makes that process easier for, for teachers, so they don't have to go through and create the classes.
It's awesome. I would consider, you know, having a high school and a middle school, you know, for them to be able to go in, you know, verify what their assignments are, if they've forgotten something, if they were out sick, they can see something that's right there, know what they need to do. You know, I get the weekly reminders, I think, I think it's Friday nights, on what's happened that week, you know, I think I could get the daily if I wanted, I think I just chose the weekly. But it's great to kind of see that in the summaries of what's going on, so it's all in the right direction, so.
Yep, and the product that we're using to sync it up is, they're updating that this summer, and we'll have a, it'll be a better, better flow for next year, too.
I can also see, because I have a five-year gap between my daughters, my sixth grader is doing extensively more online, in terms of Google Classroom and all this stuff, than my junior in high school ever came near. Not because she wasn't interested, just we've come that much further. To the point where my sixth grader and her two friends walk home from school, they jump on the computer and they meet in Google Classroom, because they're writing a book together. And they use the comments to chat, and they're, that's like, how they're collaborating, it's crazy, sixth grade kids, like, no one showed them that, they just came up with themselves-
I know, yeah.
-through what little they've been taught, so it's incredible what you've put in their hands, really.
Yes, it's a great product, and my daughter's a junior at the high school, and she goes on to Google Classroom to check, like, her homework assignments, and it, like, the answer sheets are on the home, on Google Classroom, they'll post them, and she can check to make sure her homework, like, if she's doing it right or wrong, and check her homework, so it, it, it's, it's kind of a game changer in some respects. If, if every teacher was using it, especially at the high school, at the elementary, it doesn't matter, because the kids are in the same class all day long. But in the high school, they have five different teachers all day long, and if all five teachers are using Google Classroom, they have one place to go to check all of their assignments, all of their work. So that's why we, we did sync up all of the students and created the classrooms for the teachers, to try to facilitate that process and make it easier. So we do have a seven-day active Chromebook, and this year it's about a ninety percent active, seven-day active Chromebook. Last year it was about ninety-four percent, so there is a slight decrease, and I think part of that, I believe you can attribute to the, the larger number of Chromebooks that we have. So there may be Chromebooks that are sitting in a cart, a classroom might not use all the Chromebooks in that cart, so you may have a couple of Chromebooks that sit unused for a while, and that may attribute to the, the decrease in the, in the percentage.
Do we keep track of requests for those Chromebooks, and if teachers are not able to access them, like, if they are-
Yes.
-you know, wanting them on a Thursday, but then, you know, they requested it, and they were third in line, or something?
Yeah, so we use Google Calendar to, to manage all of our Chromebook carts, in all the schools. So, teacher can go on and, and try to request a cart, so if a school has two or three carts that are available, they'll, they'll pop up in the calendar, and then they can pick the cart, and then they go get it. There is always requests at some schools for more, especially at the middle school. They would like to, I think, be a one-to-one if they could. And, this summer, if, depending on the budget and how much money I have after spending some of, what I'm going to try to do is, like I did last year, the past couple of years, is, whatever money is left for Chromebooks and other educational devices, leave that up to the principals to decide how they want to spend that money. So, if the middle school wanted to spend all that money on new Chromebooks, they could buy all new Chromebooks and, and add more if they wanted to. Some schools may decide they want to replace a couple of the older smartboards that they have with new, the short throw projectors, the model classroom, they could do that instead. So, giving the principals a little more flexibility in deciding how they want to spend some of the money that's, that's going to be left after we do some of the network upgrades and things like that. So, and I'll, I can kind of get to that. But yeah, there is, there is request for more Chromebooks.
The other question is, are you finding students are bringing in their own Chromebooks?
Not so much.
No?
No.
All right.
There, there's a few, a couple of kids here and there that might bring an iPad in, or bring a Chromebook in, and, and they can connect to our network using their Google account. But for the most part, it's, they're using the products that, that we have.
Even in high school?
Mm-hmm. I mean, they all have, the high school, they have phones, like, my daughter uses her phone-
Yeah.
-and that's what she, she'll go on her phone to check Google Classroom, using the app, and, so a lot of the kids use their phones, but, but as far as bringing laptops in or Chromebooks, I don't see too much of that.
Are middle school students allowed to use their phones at school, or is that still not?
Middle school, they don't use their phones, they're not supposed to.
Right.
I, I, to the Chrome-
Just checking.
To the Chrome, my, my daughter has a Chromebook in high school, and I've said, well, wouldn't it be helpful to bring it in? She said, I don't need to, I use the Chromebooks at school-
Right.
-and because everything's virtual, I don't need to have my own.
Yeah, so when they, when they sign into the Chromebook at school with their Google account, it's, it's exactly what they have at home.
At home, right. So she doesn't bother worrying about bringing it along and possibly dropping it or losing it, she just uses the school one.
Yep. Yeah, and the high school usually has enough to use. It's not, like the middle school where they're, they're used quite a bit, the high school has, has some availability. So the model classrooms, so we have about two hundred model classrooms that we've completed over the past three, four years, and there's still a few classrooms that have functioning smartboards with mounted projectors that are still in use, and didn't want to rip them out, because they're still decent, and teachers are using them, so why take that, why take them out? But, as they die, if, like I said, if the principal wants to use some of that money to replace some of those smartboards or projectors that are, are getting older, then they can use that money to do that, and we can, we can coordinate all of that over the summer. And then, like I said, we'll work with all the principals to see what, what their needs Computer-based testing, so we're in the middle of map testing right now, are we just finished? Do we, are there still some-
Only makeup kids who were out sick are already on vacation, or who are just making up to vacation.
And I haven't heard of too many issues or problems, so it seems to be going pretty smoothly. We're preparing for MCAS, which is going to be coming up pretty soon, in March. The high school will be the, it'll be their first year doing computer-based testing, so the, all the sophomores will be taking the ELA test in March. I think they'll be the first ones to do the, the first MCAS coming up, and-
Did they use the computer-based testing when they were in eighth grade?
Yes, they should have.
They did, so it will be new for the high school-
Not new for the kids.
-staff, but not for, new for the students.
Exactly.
That's excellent.
Yeah, so the kids, we've been doing this for three years, and, so you're right, the high school staff, it'll be new for, but for the kids, it'll be the same that they, same thing that they've done before, so it won't be new for them.
It's been remarkable, talking to Mike about when we started the keyboarding without tiers, the librarians, when we started doing the map testing for formative assessment for the, for the teachers' use. We started out with kids not even know how to really do this, they thought everything was a touchscreen, and it's really amazing, I was really nervous and hearing from people across state that they didn't have, they couldn't click and drag and do things, and that all disappeared very quickly. And in the three years or four years that we've been doing these different things, it, it's like, you don't realize how quickly they moved to the upper grades. So, it'll be interesting. The high school, Mike, this is their, the last year of the legacy test, I believe, for the high school.
The last year?
Of the old MCAS tests, yeah. But it's got to be computer-based.
Yeah, well, it's computer, it's computer-based now, so this, they'll be taking the computer-based this year.
Yeah, I mean, this, I mean, excuse me, this year.
Yeah. Yep, and the learning without tiers, the keyboarding without tiers program's going well, the librarians, library media specialists are using that program in the class, in their library time, to get the students used to using the keyboard and typing, especially in the lower grades. And after February break, the kindergartners are going to be starting at the new Bradstreet School to use the, the computers as well. It's always fun in a first grade class, trying to see the kids log in with their username and password, and trying to get that, get that typed in, takes a while.
You talk about your new invention, Michael?
It's, it may not work.
Oh!
So here's, so-
This was brilliant!
I know, it was brilliant, actually, it is, it is, it's part of Clever, so the Clever is a program that basically allows students to, it's a single sign-on application, where you sign on with one, your, your Google account, and you have access to all these other products. And that's how they get onto keyboarding without tiers. But for the little kids, they can use a QR code, so that when they open the laptop, the, the camera turns on, and they can scan a QR code into the camera, and it automatically logs them into their Google account. So they don't have to type in their username and password.
Take half the class, right?
The problem is, when we, when we set that up using the single sign-on within the Google administration product, the, it turns off the ability for, so when I reset your password today-
Yes.
-then, when I turn that on, you would not be able to put in a new password. It, it removes the ability to, to add your own password. So when I reset a password, that's what your password is, and, and you can't change it. So I would have to, like-
Get a ticket system to-
It would, it, so-
That's amazing.
So we're looking to see if there's a workaround, or if there's a way around that. So we've, we've contacted Google, and we're trying to figure out if there's a way to bypass that. But, it would be great for the little kids, the kindergartners especially, just to scan their little QR code and not have to type in a password, but, we'll see. It's, it's still a work in progress. So the MCAS, I said, like I said, is coming up, all regular testing will be done May twenty-fourth, and we have a website that the staff can go to to, to get information. We've created the manuals, and I showed you this last year, so these are our, our manuals for the test administrators and the test coordinators, and we basically boil down what the state, the big booklet the state puts out, into a step-by-step, exactly what the teacher and the administrator needs to do to start the testing process. And, there's a troubleshooting guide that we put out, we put together, so these two products here, basically the teacher can print out two, two sheets of paper, and that's all they really need to, to do the, the testing for MCAS. So it's, it's been, like I said, the principals are at the point now where they've already scheduled their MCAS testing, not even coordinating with IT, because they feel comfortable enough that they don't need IT support, and they're actually going to be testing, like, all third graders and our fourth graders are going to be testing at the same time at Atkinson, or, all third graders will test at the same time, so that they can, they have enough Chromebooks now where they can do that, and they don't need to stagger it so that we have tech support available. So it's, it's gone well. And just, just to back up, it was actually, when we decided to test every single student and not stagger it like the state was going to roll it out, it actually was a great move, because now everybody is, is on the same page, like, and everybody's had the practice, and everybody's been doing it, and we don't have to retrain a new group of teachers every year for three to four years. So, so this is the last year we'll probably, at the high school, have to kind of go through a training process for the, the high school teachers. The printing, so we're second year in Paper Cut, and it seems to be going very well. We've been updating the, the software, the entire town is, is using Paper Cut, police, fire, town, town hall, they're all using Paper Cut. It's funny, very similar to last year, we, I looked at the unreleased jobs, which is one metric that we can actually look at, and it was almost exactly the same number of pages sa-, like, saved. So we've saved about a hundred and twenty-five thousand pages, just in teachers not picking up a print job that they sent to the printer. It deletes it from the, from the queue, and they just felt that it wasn't important to pick up, or they printed-
A mistake.
-a mistake, or they decided it was, they didn't need it. So just, just in that one metric alone, it's about a six thousand dollar savings, just in that, in that one, one thing. And that's not counting, prior to this, when teachers would send a print job to a printer, and they send it to the wrong printer, they'd go to get it, and it's not there, so they'd go to print it again, where it-
Right.
-then it's sitting on the other printer, and then it gets thrown into the trash, so very little recycling in, in those copy rooms, and I think it's gone, gone very well.
Mr. Grant, could I just add something?
Yeah.
Change is hard, everywhere, and Mike took some lumps with this change, you know, because people were resistant to actually doing this, me being one of them at first, and-
Sorry.
-and I said, well, Mike, do you really, really have to do it to us in central office, too?
Yeah.
He said, yes, and, but it's made all the difference, and Mike's vision to do this, his toughness and grit to really stick it out when the tickets increased probably twenty-five fold-
Temporarily.
Temporarily, was a really good mood, I'm proud of him, Mike, that, and this has been a big difference, and it's much better for privacy, it's much better for a whole host of things, so.
Yep. Thank you. And the newer version that we just installed allows teachers to scan directly to their Google Drive. So, prior to this, they had to scan to their email, and then save it to the drive, or, so if they wanted to just scan a bunch of documents and put it right in their drive, it'll just get stored right in their Google Drive. So it's a nice, nice way to just get some physical papers into digital form, like those homework sheets. So teachers create the answer sheet, they can scan it in, goes right to Google Drive, and they share it in classroom. So the workflow is a little bit smoother. And we're also looking at testing, for the ability to allow students to print. So with the latest version, they added the ability to sync up the Google, your Google org organization, so like, all the students could sync in. Right now, we use Active Directory to sync all of our teachers. Students aren't in Active Directory, they're only in Google. So, with the new version, we can sync students in, so we're going to look at adding a small group of students in, and seeing how we can allow them to print. So we can give limits, like, they get ten pages per month, or however, whatever, whatever works. And they could use, next to the copier, you could have a, like an iPad or some print release thing that they would type in their code, and they could release the, the print job at that copier, or printer. So, we're testing that out, it's something we'll look at over the summer.
Can I just ask this question?
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, kind of early in the high school years here still, but I find my son doesn't print an awful lot of things in, and brings them in, they're just submitting them electronically.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, because they're, that's how they're working them. So I'm curious, what do you think they would be printing at the school? I mean, are they, because, because they're sharing, they're collaborating all of those, so, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just curious, like, what's the need?
Ideally is-
Are they asking for it?
I would like nobody to print anything, and just have everybody share everything electronically. So, there has been, people have been requesting the ability to print at the high school.
In order?
No, no. That's, that's kindergarten, that's not the high-
And there are some teachers that actually, you know, have a different style, or a different mode around that, just like some school committee members over the years, where instead of electronic, they wanted hard copies, and some just wanted electronic before the meetings. So it's one of those things you can look at. I do know, Mike, that a lot of, some schools do have a certain amount for students per month, but just like we have had a copier at North Endover High School for forty years, it's still been a dime for forty years per copy, you know, I've seen places that give you a free amount up to a certain point, and then you can also print pages by, do something like that, so, there's a lot of options.
Yep.
Interesting.
Yep. Network infrastructure, so, very briefly, we've completed, all the switches at all the buildings have been updated, so all buildings have HP Aruba switches, they have lifetime So, all buildings have HP Aruba switches, they have lifetime guarantee or warranties. So, if a switch dies, we can send it back, and they send us either repaired or a new, or a new one if they don't have any in stock. So, it's a lifetime warranty, don't have to pay any extra for it. Access points, all the buildings have the Aruba Wi-Fi. We installed the new Sonic Firewall over the summer, so that, that kinda saved us a little bit of money, too, 'cause we were using Cisco's umbrella to act as a firewall and a content filter. So, this new firewall does all of that. The fiber network, all buildings have the 20-gig fiber connection back to the town, back to Town Hall. So, the project, projects for this summer is, I need to add one more switch to Brad Street. And the reason is, we added the speakers there for the PA system, and that used up quite a few of the drops that we had available. So, they need an extra switch and probably purchase an extra one as a spare or replacement. So, if one dies, we can just put one in, send the other one back out, and then, but when that one comes back, put that on the shelf. So, we'd have something to be able to replace it with. Access points, we're gonna be replacing the older access points at the middle school and Thompson. So, those are the two buildings that have the oldest access points. They were actually the original access points that were in the high school that they put in five or six years ago. So, we took them, those out of the high school and then set them out, got new ones for the high school about four, five years ago. And, so, we're still using those. So, the middle school has the oldest, and Thompson still has some. And we're also looking at migrating, we have, to control all of our Wi-Fi, we have two physical servers, those are at Town Hall, and we're gonna migrate those to virtual servers so that we don't need to maintain or purchase new ones. So, part of the summer project will be migrating those servers over to the Dell EMC VX rails that we have at Town Hall and Police Station. So, we'll utilize those to, to run those. We won't need to have those physical appliances in place. So, that would be a nice, nice thing. And then, once we, once those move away, basically, everything is virtualized. We don't have any physical servers left in the school. And finally, Brad Street. So, the Brad Street project took quite a bit of time this summer, and we did all the cabling, all the cable was, was done at the, at the building. Voice and data, all new phones, all new Wi-Fi, all the classrooms and model classrooms there at the, at the new Brad Street. All new network equipment, the new PA system, which is tied to the Cisco phones. So, when they make an announcement, it goes over the speakers and the phones, the phone speakers. And we're also looking at installing, they purchased the CarWright Pro. I don't know if you've heard of that, or- So, that is a device that will hopefully manage the parking and the pickup and drop-off at the Brad Street. So, as cars come through, it identifies them using an RFID tag in the window, and it sends that to a monitor. And as they come through the driveway, it queues up who's, who's coming in to pick them up. So, as the car comes in, it sends the signal to the monitor and puts all of the students in order as the cars come through. So, as they, they can just start sending them out in the order in which the cars have arrived.
It's simply the high-tech version of what we do now.
Exactly.
You send Miss Mary Lou with a clipboard to run down and do every car, and then every 20, or, actually, Miss Mary Lou has someone else do it now. She's out there. They run back 20, give it to them, they, they do, they line them up. And it's very efficient, but it's, it's a lot of exercise and a lot of steps.
Yeah.
And this, this, for short money, could be a really good thing for us.
Yeah. So, so we're hopefully, that, it, it only, it doesn't require power, it just uses a network cable, so hopefully, we can just run that cable to those devices. It's gonna take a little installation costs to get those installed and work with the gym and the building department to get that up and running. So, that's basically, that's it. Any, any questions?
Exciting.
Thank you very much.
No, it's great, thank you.
I mean, there's, there's a ton of other things that we've been doing, it's just, this kinda scratches the surface. These are the big things, but there's tons of other little things that are going on.
I'd say maybe the most important thing is that you reset my password.
It is so exciting. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Well, it's also the fact that your tickets are all really now about how do I, that means the teachers are embracing what they can be doing-
Right.
Rather than afraid of trying things, so that's awesome.
Yeah, and it's, stuff is getting used, it's not, it's not just sitting there, which is nice.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mike.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. A couple of items for the chair's report. The first one, you'll notice that our meeting, next meeting on the 28th, we're going to hold it at the Sargent School with a start time at 6:30, so, so the kids can attend, is that why? It's gonna be in the library, we're gonna hear a technology update from Courtney Ahern and some fun things that she does with the kids there. So, that will be 6:30 on the 28th at Sargent.
Have you shared any other school visits going up?
We haven't scheduled them yet, but we will be going to high school.
Yeah, we have, yeah, we do.
And the library.
Yeah.
Stevens Memorial Library.
And it was really a matter of, we have them all scheduled, but we've been working with some teachers who have very young kids, and they've been having some difficulty swapping out the schedules for daycare. Lorraine, would you like to just talk about that?
Yeah, we're, we're-
Just move your mic closer.
We're working on switching a couple of dates, so we should have that final by the end of next week. We also, we were trying to coordinate the high school with the history lab and the night school. And we're gonna do a panel discussion with the kids at the night school, but the night that we chose, they are doing final exams, so that's not gonna work. So, we're just, we're just working around a few things, and we should have everything final for next week.
The only reason I was asking, not a huge deal, moving to the Sargent last year as well?
We did talk about that.
Maybe, we could just, next time.
Yeah.
No, we did, we did talk about that, and there's a very good reason for it.
Yeah, so, there's a couple of things. One is-
People get jealous, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
No, we've been to, you know, as you know, we've been to the Sargent, we've been to the Atkinson.
Thompson.
And the Thompson. The reason we're going to the Sargent is the elementary librarians are putting on a presentation of the work they're doing, and the Sargent students were really the early adopters and the really folks that are into this work, and the other schools are all coming along with it now. So, it's the Sargent students that are really the stars of the show, and the materials, equipment, and all the stuff that they need is out at that library.
Sure, I understand. If it's possible, you know, in the next year, if we can get to, I think Franklin and Kitchard are the other two schools we haven't been to yet, so.
The middle school.
Yep. And then, we have, so we're looking at the high school, and then we're also looking at the Stevens Memorial Library for the presentation and talk around NA Reads. So, thank you.
Great.
Okay. And then, I also, last meeting, we talked about the Superintendent's Advisory Committee to look at fundraising, but after consulting with Dr. Gilligan and upon the recommendation of our town council, Suzanne Egan, I'm going to recommend that we change the fundraising policy practices review from the Superintendent's Advisory Group to a school committee subcommittee. Okay? And the purpose of that subcommittee would be to advise and recommend to the full school, full school committee additions or modifications to the current school committee fundraising policies that reflect the current school district fundraising practices combined with fundraising best practices and standards. That's a lot of fundraising in that paragraph.
Reviewed and assisted by council.
No, that's not in our packet.
So, I would also, because of the last one, we had Mr. McDevitt appointed to that committee along with Mr. Mealy, I would carry that forward and ask that the two of them co-chair that committee, and I just need a motion to change it.
So moved. That.
Second that muscle.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Picard, seconded by Mr. Trizzi. Mr. Trizzi?
Sure.
Yes, aye.
You abstaining to that one?
You volunteer if I go through that.
Aye. Aye.
And aye, five-nothing. Thank you. Last night was NAMM's Family Night, and it was a very well-run event, as always. And I just wanna give credit to the NAMM's faculty and staff who put that on. It was, it was great to see. And then, on Monday night, at the Board of Selectmen meeting, we presented Andrew Mailer with a plaque thanking him for his years of service and dedication and collaboration with the schools. And we wish him the best of luck in his new job.
Can he get us, like, more circuit breaker and something? Just like, yeah.
Well, that's a good question.
I did ask, though.
While he's comp trolling?
Yes, as he's comp trolling.
He mentioned that they don't spend too much.
I know.
Alright, now, moving on to old business, we have our FY-
Budget status.
Bud, 19th Budget Status Report.
Mr. Mealy. So, as I mentioned last time, what we had wanted to do was match up for this time of year to last time of year when we did the same number of payrolls and warrants, and that's what's reflected in the report that you got for this packet. And it's consistent with what we've been tracking, a little over a percent difference or more than last year. And originally, we had been anticipating a deficit of $380,000. We had that down to somewhere around 150, zero to 150. We're hopeful with the approval of the increases in the revolving accounts that will be able to impact that even further. So, but that's where we are right now, is projecting anywhere between zero and 150. That's what we've communicated to both the outgoing and the interim, or, what's the term they're using?
Act.
Acting Town Manager, Lynn Savage. And so, they're aware of it as well.
Okay. We have our second reading of the Dominican Republic Service Trip.
Can I, can I ask a quick question about the budget?
Oh, sure.
Update? So, everything's running around 50%, except for we knew that Brad Street was gonna be a little bit higher. The central office is running at 65% of its year budget. Is that concerning to you in a-
Not at all, and here's why. The schools start up in September, for the most part, although they order, you'll see supplies and materials, and those items will be more than 50%. You'll see the salaries this time of year are just a little more than 50%, which is where they should be.
Right.
But where more employees are full-year employees, you're gonna see that in the 60s.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Alright, second reading of the Dominican Republic Service Trip.
And shall I make a motion to approve the Dominican Republic Service Trip as presented in the packet?
Second. Motion made by Mr. Trizzi, second by Ms. Mabley. Any discussion? Mr. Trizzi?
Aye.
Mr. McDevitt?
Aye.
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 And aye. Second reading of the request to increase to the revolving accounts.
Mr. Mealy?
Certainly answer any questions, we talked about this last time. We're increasing mainly the, where we always do food services and community programs, but we're also doing the preschool because there are, there's a fund balance there that we can use towards salaries that can help offset some of our extra costs this year. So, we're asking for the increases as presented. The other thing I realized, I didn't mention this last time, but I did put it in the cover letter, is that something else that we do with community programs is, kinda use it as a pass-through because they have the ability for paying online. So, something like the Nature's Classroom at the middle school, parents were given the ability to pay online using the community program system, but when the bills come in and they're paid, they're paid out of community programs 'cause that's where the money has come in. So, their budget has to reflect that expenditure, even though it's really not a community program's expenditure. So, that's why that's there.
That's interesting. Makes sense.
Is there anything that we can look, I mean, is some of that cost basically then absorbed on? I mean, can we look at other payment methods that might not require transaction fees?
We are.
They're high through there.
Yep. We are, we haven't found yet, but we're continuing to look for that possibility because we, we get all the time that, well, is there any way to do it so that I'm just paying?
Right.
I mean, some mom asked me that, if we can Venmo, I don't think we can Venmo, right?
We can't right now.
But that's what everybody's doing, right?
But Venmo charges a fee as well, right? It's a percentage?
No.
No.
I've never paid a percentage.
The old Shacks, that's the best way to do it. Is that the light bill, David?
So, we are looking at, at trying to get it so that people can pay electronically, but without incurring a fee.
Right. 'Cause I, I know I just signed up my daughter, based on Caitlin Dolly's recommendation beginning of the year for the program in the summer to help you write your college application stuff, and the service fee was like $12, $11, it's a lot.
Yep.
But I was worried that it was gonna fill up, and I didn't wanna risk not making it, so. But it's expensive.
Might be an opportunity on the Masivo listserv to ask if anyone's doing it. Because everyone keep, it's kinda like that PE requirement that everyone asks about.
Right.
And they say, "I know we're doing it somewhere, but none of us can find it locally."
Right.
We're in Massachusetts. Maybe there's a particular reason why, and we could ask Consulate Egan to take a peek at this as well.
I would imagine personally that I could take money without a fee, but I wonder, because it's a, almost a municipal thing-
Right.
That's why a fee might apply to something like a, a Venmo for, for, almost like a business-type account.
Right.
But even when you pay your town bills online, the fee's not that high.
It's not that high, but it's still there.
There's a fee.
Right. The fees are high, though, through community programs, I think.
I don't know.
So, we'll continue to look at that.
Okay. So, do we need a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Excuse me, so I move that we approve the changes to the budgets for community programs, school lunch, and the preschool as identified on the attached spreadsheet.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. McDevitt, second by Ms. Mabley. Mr. Trizzi?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. And aye, five-o. Alright, second reading of the MOU for the Town Community Support Coordinator position.
If I could have Consulate Egan join us, as she'll be participating in the next two items. She provided some information for us. And one of the questions the school committee had asked, I think it was Mr. Trizzi, is-
It was.
Why do we, you know, why, should we have all five selectmen sign it versus the town manager? Just a quick reminder on this, this is to work with the new community support service person, a community psychologist, Deanna Cruz. A lot of Deannas and Diana's I've been talking to lately. She's wonderful, and this is very similar to the one we signed with Rick Gorman in the youth center, to be able to share information, because we're, we're cross, we're overlapping quite a bit in the community. And we've gotta provide the best services we can, and she's really a talented, wonderful person who's not only skilled at what she does, but it's terrific because she's bilingual as well, and she's already helped us with a couple of things, you know, using that skill as well, so.
That's great.
So, Consulate Egan, would you like to explain, or Mr. Trizzi, do you have other questions to get this started?
Absolutely, I can address the question as to why it's the town manager versus the Board of Selectmen because it's the different roles each of the, sort of, the Board of Selectmen play versus the town manager, and the town manager manages the administration, the operation of the town, and the Board of Selectmen are more of a policy-setting body, that's their authority, is policy-setting, and the town manager's the one who would be managing and supervising the, Deanna Cruz, the community support coordinator. So, it's more appropriate for him to be, or that office to be signing the MOU. And we have had other MOUs with regarding this position, 'cause it's a new position. A lot of towns are looking at this position to provide better services to the community so that we have somebody who's actually the liaison for social services and when there's residents in need, and also the students. And one of the other things we've done is had an MOU with incorporating her position into the emergency response with the public safety officer, so it's the police and fire and the community services coordinator, to provide that ability to share information. And in that instance, it's the town manager also, because he, that position is the, under their authority, under the charter and the bylaws, manage that.
Yeah, I understood that part, I was curious, if it wasn't for the Board of Selectmen, why, why is it the school?
Well, the school committee, we, we had the school committee as the signing for this is because it's also sort of a policy question, too, as to whether you're gonna incorporate that into the school.
It's a policy for us, but it's not a policy for the Board of Selectmen?
What's a, well, um-
My concern, Suzanne, I don't really believe in the point. I was, you know, obviously, Andrew's leaving tomorrow, his last day. And, you know, I just wanna make sure that they're on board, we're on board. At the end of the day, it's gonna work out fine. I don't wanna make a big amount of a molehill here. But, you know, I, I felt that, I believe, if it is a policy- But, you know, I felt that, I believe if it is a policy, then they should sign it, and we should, because we're both policymaking boards by and large. If not, if it's just going to be Andrew, then it probably shouldn't be Greg on this and not us. If it was going to be a utilization of staff, we don't have any say in utilization of staff. So that was the point.
And I understand that. I think the different, I guess, I guess the way I was looking at it differently, and maybe, you know, we can certainly amend it and have the superintendent sign it, so it would be a superintendent versus a town manager agreement. The way I was looking at it is more as sort of integrating this position into the school environment, and so that may affect the policy as to how, you know, certain services are integrated into the school community. But there's absolutely no reason why, if you don't choose to look at this as a non-policy question, and it's just mainly a staffing question, we can amend it and...
Do you know, as, if you notice or not, if you don't, that's fine, but has it been presented to the board of selectmen? Are they aware of this?
No, they have, they're not, I don't know if they're aware of it, but it certainly has not been presented to the board of selectmen because what this MOU is doing is it's saying this staff member will become a part of the school community. They've already supported the...
Creation of the position, yeah.
The creation of the position and all of the, sort of the role that position would play. And since the school committee and the school community didn't really have any input into the creation of that position and the services that that position would provide, then that's why you're looking at it for the first time.
I do see the distinction between town manager and superintendent. She reports to the town manager, she doesn't report to the superintendent. But we would be signing this to integrate it in the schools.
I, you know, and maybe it's something we could dig deep of, but this is the second reading, and it's a good thing. It's simply, I know that this is, I believe Suzanne and the folks on here, is the similar process we've used in past years. Is this the similar one that we use with Rick Gorman, I think?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and the others. So, I would only say this, and I don't like to lawyer without a license, because I'm not a lawyer.
We don't like you two either.
And I don't like it if you do either.
I'm glad we have one. I would just say that, to me, it's important, not because this is a particular policy, but this impacts our practices under the policies which govern North and over the school committee policies around student records, student privacy.
Right.
All of those other components. That's my only two cents.
It's more about our sharing information in that direction.
And again, one of the reasons this jumped out at me quite frankly was that Andrew's leaving. And I just want to make sure that there is a, you know, the continuity that the selectmen are supporting this person working in or with the school department. That was the genesis of the conversation, so.
I can understand that, and I just, it would be the town manager who would be making that determination.
Sure, but again, we're not going to have a full-time town manager, best case scenario to sometime this summer, so.
I have a general question, which is, when we enact one of these, do we review it periodically? Do we have a way to revoke it if we were unhappy with the way things were going, or?
Absolutely. So in most instances, anything that you sign or you agree to, you have the same, you agree to and you sort of disagree to it, you revoke it in the same manner? So if there was a...
But we don't review it periodically, per se.
No, not per se, but if there was something, an instance that came up and you decided, oh, we don't want to enter into this MOU anymore. We don't want this relationship. You can take the vote and you can...
Which was kind of my point, that we would never know. I mean, it would be up to Greg or someone from the school department to find out that this isn't working out.
Right.
So it's like, we're signing in agreement that they're coming in, but at the end of the day, we have zero supervision of this person. We have no idea if it's beneficial to the school or not. I'm sure it's going to be.
It's not necessarily something that they're working under me within the school system to do thing. A position like this is working in collaboration with Rick Gorman, working in collaboration with police and fire, working in collaboration with someone like Steve Nugent. And more likely than not, this is a person that's doing work outside the scope of what's done in the schools to help provide services from collaterals within the Merrimack Valley.
And I also think that what it, what it's designed to do is to sort of come before the school committee and say, do you want to make this decision as to sort of work across school and town and make that unified response and resource for the community? And have the school become a part of that unified response? Because I know one of the things the community support coordinator doing is working with veterans agents, senior center, and all the different services and trying to make it a sort of a unified resource, so the school can then determine if they also want to be a part of that. But...
Mountain made.
David, do you have a question? Do you have a preference? If it was passed tonight and you signed it, right, we could get down to town hall before noon tomorrow.
So I just want to clarify one thing. So, under the charter, the acting town manager has the same authority under the charter to act as a town manager. She doesn't have limited ability to act?
What I'm saying, Andrew's still the town manager.
My point is simply, we're here, the board of selectmen's there, if they're on board, you know. Again, I didn't make a mountain out of molehill there. I just want everybody on the same page and make sure that's the case. That's all it was.
Would you like us to...
How about this? I make a motion to accept the MOU.
Yay!
I'll say, I don't have a...
Second.
You did a second.
I would just...
Madam Chair, point of order. Point of order. There's a motion on the floor, it's been seconded.
Motion made by Mr. Trezey, seconded by Mr. McDevitt. Any discussion?
I think we had it already.
I just want to remind them that this motion, you said, Andrew made of the town manager. So if it wasn't signed by him tomorrow, if he's not available, then it would be Lynn next week. That's the only clarification.
Okay. All right. Get down there tomorrow. Hustle down there. Aye.
Mr. McDevitt?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye, 5-0. I'd like to say that was easy.
That one was easy.
All right. Second reading of the school calendar for next year.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the calendar as presented in the packet.
Motion by Mr. Trezey to approve the calendar as presented in the packet.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McDevitt. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I would like to make an amendment to the calendar so that the school closing on October 14th would read Columbus Day slash Indigenous Peoples' Day as reflected in the town calendar.
Madam Chair, point of order.
I raised this last week. I feel like the motion is beyond the scope of this agenda item that was posted. We're just accepting the calendar for the year. There was nothing on the agenda saying we're going to be talking about renaming the holiday. And I think the motion's out of order.
Can I ask town council to weigh in on that?
Certainly. I'm not sure if it's out of order or not, so.
Well, I think, respectfully, I think we should get an opinion, obviously, but I think when it comes to motions, you're the presiding officer, parliamentarian, it's pretty much your decision to...
Right, but I don't know if it's... So, I mean, I can weigh in on, I guess what I'll weigh in on is the posting of the notice on the agenda, because I think that that's also what you're addressing.
Yep.
Right? So typically, under the open meeting law, any item that you can foresee coming before the school committee for a discussion is to be listed, under the open meeting law should be listed on the agenda to provide that 48-hour notice of agenda items so people can be present to weigh in on it or to listen to the discussion. And so if this is going to be considered a separate issue as to the naming of a day and whether or not that is a listed item on your agenda, I think that, you know, what's on your agenda is school calendar approval of that. So, I don't think it's necessarily, I think that you should consider that. I guess that's, I'll raise that as an issue for you to consider that in terms of whether proper notice or sufficient notice has been given to consider something, an issue like this, if it isn't listed on the agenda.
Okay.
Does the naming, does the adding the name to a holiday make it a separate issue? I guess that's where I'm, I don't know where to draw the line.
Right, and so if you're, right, and I, I mean, I don't think that it's my determination. I don't think it's a legal determination as to whether or not that is, but I just say, raise that issue. Like, it is a legal issue to make sure that everything that is on your agenda and that you're discussing at a meeting is posted.
Is posted, right.
Right? You get 48 hours' notice. And then I think it's the school committee's determination as to whether or not this is something that falls within the approval of the school calendar or is something separate.
Okay.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Yep.
Just, I noticed that this has been passed out, the proclamation that the board of selectmen passed last year, I guess. Was this posted on their agenda when they took this up?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
So, I guess, Mr. Trezey, my only, my comment to that is, in October, when Ms. Picard brought this up, I believe the consensus in the group was, October wasn't the appropriate time, we should do it with the school calendar. So, does that, I mean, I think you might have been the one who said that, I'm not sure.
Well, again, I would just say that if we're going to discuss it, it should be properly noticed, and I don't think it has been properly noticed. And I think people would have opinions about it. Obviously, Ms. Picard has a very strong opinion about it, but there might be other people in the community that would have one as well, you know? I think we received a handful of emails over the last few days. I'm sure we all received the same ones, but I think if you, something posted on your agenda that said renaming Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day, you might get a different turnout. That's all I'm saying.
I'll offer, I don't know, maybe a little bit of a compromise here. I mean, I think it's important as we start to hit the February break that people are starting to plan for breaks for 2020. And I would look to conceivably approve the dates, like the literal dates that are there without the descriptions, and if we need to come back and review the description and what we are calling October 14th with proper notice, that we do that. But I think it's important for families, as it has always been in the past, but, you know, President's Day and Patriots' Day to kind of know for their own travel purposes. I mean, families are going to be booking this year for next year, and I think it's important that we do that. And I'd be happy to come back and, you know, review what we call October 14th, but I think it's important that families have those dates solidified.
Any other discussion?
So what would the calendar read, then?
At this point in time, it could just say, school closed. And we could put on our next meeting, what are we going to call October 14th? But I think it's important that people have the other dates locked. I'm in favor of it, but, I mean, I understand Mr. Trezey's point as well in terms of properly noticing and being able, knowing and understanding the naming of the date may be there. I'm still in favor of it, but...
So I asked, actually, because I couldn't remember what this said, so I asked for it. And maybe if we attach this, it gives people information, because the part in the middle says that the town will now call it, recognize that same day as Indigenous Peoples' Day as well. So, the town calendar does, I think you brought that up, it does say Columbus Day slash Indigenous Peoples' Day. If it didn't, I think that is a much more massive issue, but since that does, if we attach this, maybe that would help the discussion about the naming.
I would caution us about taking away the name of a holiday as it currently exists unless we take away the names of all of the holidays and just say school closed on all of the holidays.
We can terminate whatever. I mean, we could literally just leave it as is and update it later if we want to make sure we have proper notice for it. I'm just saying, let's...
Get the dates.
Let's get the dates out and publicize so that families are aware of, as they would anticipate that the 14th of October is an official no-school day.
And then this would be an agenda item on the next school committee?
The naming of October 14th. There's a lot of different options. I mean, you could think about approving the calendar as is and table the discussion on that component and post it for another meeting to have public comment and/or any other mechanism to hear from different sides. But that's an interesting point, too, Helen, about taking away.
So last year, when we reviewed the school calendar and were approving it, Ms. Picard brought it up then, and our response then was, well, we didn't want to do anything without the town acting. We didn't feel it was in our purview to rename a holiday or add to a holiday in our calendar unless the town did something. And the town has since done something, so I actually think it's just being consistent with what our town, our selectmen have already decided.
I'm not opposed to just saying no closed either. School closed as well, and not having it say Labor Day or Memorial or Veterans.
I don't like that.
So you folks have a motion on the floor?
There's a motion to approve it as is. And seconded.
But there's an amendment to it. So how does that work? Does she take, do we have to, do we vote on the first motion or we vote on the amended motion?
That's a subsequent motion that we'll, she'll make her motion, and if it gets seconded, we'll debate, we'll debate that.
Further amendment, that point.
Okay. So we have...
Well, I, my, I have a point of order on the table first.
Right.
So you have the rule not one first.
So, I think it's okay to have this discussion tonight rather than...
Just okay.
To do it, it's not out of order to have the discussion tonight. So now we fall with one motion not seconded, right? Is that where we're back to?
I don't want to doubt the ruling of the chair.
Can you say the motion again?
I offer an amendment. I move that we, on the October 14th holiday, school closed, that it read Columbus Day slash Indigenous Peoples' Day as reflected in the town calendar.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Ms. Picard, seconded by Mr. McDevitt. Yeah, I know. More discussion now.
Well, I'd love to hear the reasons behind it. I mean, the, Ms. Picard made the motion.
I did make the motion, and I've spoken to it a number of times. I'm happy to speak to it again. I feel that it is an inclusive statement to include Indigenous Peoples' Day on that date. It's referred to that in many places internationally. It's referred that way in the Commonwealth, it's referred that way in our town. I believe Columbus Day tells us something about 1492, and it tells us something about 1934. There are a lot of other times and people that we can learn about. Our state standards include Indigenous Peoples' history at all levels, the elementary, middle, and high school level, and this is an opportunity for us to look more broadly at our history and to encourage conversation around all the peoples that are impacted around that holiday that we're looking at.
Madam Chair?
So, obviously, I feel like the debate's important, and I think you make a, I said it last year, last week, or two weeks ago, we spoke about it last. I don't doubt your intentions, and I know you're a kind soul, and I know that you come to this with the best of intentions. I also know, as a proud Italian-American, that Columbus Day means more than just celebrating Christopher Columbus. It means celebrating our heritage, and that's what Columbus Day has evolved into in a lot of ways. I know a lot of people, you know, at least in recent history, are focusing on, I'll just use some of the language that I read recently about the atrocities that Columbus committed. But I think that in a lot of ways, it, what concerns me is kind of the revisionist history that I think is going on in a lot of places right now. And I wonder where it stops. I mean, obviously, Columbus came to this country, this continent many, many years ago, but so did other explorers. And when they did, they brought, as I've read, you know, diseases, they obviously took over the country. But at the same time, I think, you know, we wouldn't be here without them. We wouldn't. And those, whether it's, you know, Columbus, Magellan, De Soto, Hudson, anyone, I mean, those were like the great entrepreneurs of their time. I mean, those one, the risks they took to get on a ship and come to America, and that's when they thought the world was flat, they could go off the side of it. It was. I mean, a lot of people thought the world was flat in 1492, Helen.
That's actually...
Hold on, I'm going to finish respectfully.
Certainly.
I wonder where the revisionist history stops? You know, is Washington next to the own slave? Is that next, is that next on the agenda? I'm all...
Certainly.
I wonder where the revisionist history stops? You know, is Washington next to the own slave? Is that next, is that next on the agenda? I'm all about sharing experiences, learning, and that's why it's important to post this stuff, is to have that debate. Let the community come in and weigh in on it. But my fear is, you know, this is not just a feel-good, let's celebrate, you know, both Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day. This is a movement, this is not just Helen Picard, this is a movement to get rid of Columbus Day. And a lot of people, you know, take objection with that, as one of them, I do. Why can't there be an Indigenous People's Holiday unto itself? Why does it have to take over Columbus Day? Because that's the next step. The next step is not just Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day, it's to move Columbus out of the whole thing. So, that's my biggest objection to it. It's not objection to the history, because I know, as someone who's grown up in this town, you know, it's, the history of Indigenous People is very important in this town, I don't dispute that whatsoever. I just think we can have both, and I don't think this, I think this is just the first step to take over Columbus Day, so, that's why I'm opposed to it.
Any other discussion? All right. Mr. Treasi?
Can I ask a question? I just want to be sure, we are voting now on just the amendment, which is October fourteenth, "School closed," Columbus and Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Just wanted, okay.
So, we're not voting on the whole calendars, what are you clarifying?
Yeah, I'm just clarifying.
We're on the fourth amendment first.
The fourteenth only.
Fourteenth amendment.
Mr. Treasi?
Oh, that's it.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, sorry.
No.
Mr. McDevitt?
I'm going to say no, because I think we should have additional debate if we are going to change it.
Ms. Picard?
Aye.
Ms. Mabley?
No.
And I will be an aye, so, three-two, no to the amendment. Three-two, it doesn't pass.
Two-three.
Two-threes, is that how you say it? Okay.
So, do I then need to make an amendment that willing, or like to add to a future agenda to discuss whether we would add slash Indigenous Peoples' Day to that holiday on the school calendar?
I think that's how you do it, right?
I don't think that's an amendment to the calendar, I think that's a different...
Different topic, okay.
I think it's just, you need to set in the calendar, the agenda of a future meeting and have a discussion on it.
Got it, okay. Thank you.
All right. Now, back to the original motion to approve the school calendar. Any discussion on that? All right, Mr. Treasi?
Aye.
Mr. McDevitt?
Aye.
Ms. Picard?
No.
Aye.
And aye. So, four-one on the calendar for dates, or as is.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just want to thank this committee for being indulgent, and being respectful, and being caring of the community and what we're trying to do here as a school committee, as people interested in education, and sharing very authentic and meaningful conversation. Thank you.
All right, new business, first reading of MSBA Statement of Interest.
Mr. Mabley?
Okay. So, the good news is, we don't have to read this one tonight.
Are we going to read it tonight and straighten it out?
Just as an explanation that this is, will be our third year applying to the Massachusetts School Board, School Building Authority, for the middle school renovation slash expansion project. And so, we have to, when we pass, when we approve the motion, read this whole statement in the public meeting.
As in Andrew does that.
Right.
No, sorry.
So, and the Board of Selectmen has it on their agenda for, I think it's their next meeting, to do the same thing.
Mr. Mabley, if I could stop, if he could do it on School Messenger, I think it would go very fast. In the condensed version.
So, that's what this is, and we'll have to read the whole thing at our next meeting for the second reading and approval.
Sixty-one March eighth, right? Something like that, first and second week in March, then it did.
It's actually, there are two different stages, there's the fast track and the regular, and we're in the regular, which is April, I think it's April fifteenth.
April twelve.
Oh, twelve, correct.
There was an expedited, I think, the March fifteenth, is for repair projects.
Right.
Okay. All right. So, my only concern was whether or not we, from a date perspective, we have plenty of time.
We have plenty of time.
I didn't want to have there be a freak blizzard, or ice storm, or something.
I think last year, when we did this, we were closer to the date, and so we did it, we expanded the rules and did it, but we don't need to do that this time.
Perfect.
You come here on the twenty-eighth to read this?
We'll see.
And we don't have to see the full application when we do this?
No.
Right.
It hasn't changed.
Right, okay.
All right. Is there any public comment?
Christopher Goldman, twenty-third, please. Three items, actually, four. First of all, and I'll direct this to all of you, I believe our students, including the middle schoolers, are much more aware than we were at their age. And this past incident of a woman handcuffed and escorted to a cop car outside of the school building was witnessed by several kids. What would have been nice is a message given to them on that day, and to parents on what happened, because I believe that would curb the social media chatter that you were referring to. Unfortunately, saying that it wasn't a student wasn't a sufficient communication. That's my feedback. Still, obviously, very upset about that. Secondly, it would be great to receive the start and end times of the teacher contracts, so I can continue my research and planning around the thirty-minute later start times. That'd be great.
You mean the end of this year?
Yeah, because...
Next year's year three. Next school year's the end of the teacher contract in year three.
Yeah, it's all the same, yeah, it's on the contract, is it?
It is.
I cannot find it, so, if you could...
I just wrote a contact back for email today.
Okay.
I couldn't respond off the phone with that link.
I heard that, it's totally fine, if you could send me, that'd be great, I'm having troubles...
Sorry about that.
No, no, I'm having trouble searching online, and I'll only ask if I can't Google find it.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Another thing that it would be great, at some point, and maybe this is already happening, to review metrics on scores on tests using computer versus paper. I am, speaking for myself, very curious if students do better on math on paper versus computer. Sidebar to that, as I also would like to know if there's going to be any effort for middle and high school students to be re-taught typing, or taught typing, because they were not. I think they got caught in this phase of non-computer to computer, so I don't know what's going on with that. And then, the last item, which you guys may not know of, I did ask it to, I think, Dean Cruz, was, it would be great to hear the reply from town council on the idea of bathroom monitoring for purpose of reducing the vaping. That's it. Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, seeing none. Any comments from the school committee? Final comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, my thank you to Andrew Miller as well, I didn't get to get there on Monday night, but I appreciate you and Greg going. You know, I've known Andrew for a long time, in my capacity as a rep, as well as a school member, and just a great partner to work with in so many different ways, and never more so with the building of that, you know, the Bradstreet School. The collaboration with the town was one thing, but Andrew, just being there every step of the way, and helping us, you know, figure out the shortfalls from time to time, just a great resource. I know the state's getting a great person with him, and, you know, obviously, he's going to be missed, and I wish him the best.
Any other comments?
So, I'll just really kind of echo Mr. Treasi's comments, you know, on Andrew Miller, I mean, just an unbelievable asset, and was not able to, I just came in from Orlando, so, wasn't able to attend that, but thank you for going, and he will certainly be missed. One thing that I saw online, Dr. Gilligan, and I didn't see it broadcast live, but I saw almost a YouTube version of it, and I can't remember the name of the town, although I will try to find it, but it was a town, I think, south of Boston, that actually installed vaping detectors in the bathroom. I don't know if you, somebody may remember the name of the town, but I'd be very curious to see how well that's working, the reaction, and I don't know if in your cohort of even new superintendents, if that's something that's being chatted about currently, but I would be curious to see, from both an administration and a student perspective, how well that is working, or if it's not working at all.
So, just a couple of things, I haven't said it yet, because we're going to be meeting after break. You know, I don't like to pay lip service or window dressing to anything. I think that an issue like this, that's affecting all of the Commonwealth, particularly North Andover, that I'm going to get together with just a small group of folks, including Dr. McMillan from the Water Health, George, Chet, Cheryl Barzak, to really take stock of, what do we have currently, where are the gaps, what else can we do from the public health side, what else can we do with the parent side, and then engage a bigger group to actually put a thoughtful plan into action? Because across all of the Commonwealth, everyone I run into, it's a problem in every high school, you know...
Middle schools, too.
Yeah, middle schools as well, and that's why I included George, and I've already talked to Dr. McMillan, I've talked to Brian, because just saying we're going to add suspensions is not effective. Just saying, you know, we're going to do this stuff at school, well, we also need parents at home. You know, we also need the help, you know, the kids who are getting the stuff delivered to their house that says "Adaptor," from China, I think you're the one who told me that.
Not my house.
My point being is this, I think that rather than being reactive, we have to be thoughtful and proactive. I'd like to get a couple of these experts around and say, because we're doing a heck of a lot of things in the schools that maybe people don't know about. What are we doing, where are the gaps in the schools, and then how do we engage with really smart people to figure out an action plan to move forward? Because it's really, you know, talking to Water Health, talking with, it's really about getting gaps, but also be able to look at home, you know, I think, you know, we can say, "We're doing this, we're doing this, we're doing this," and I feel like people are doing a lot of great things across a lot of different organizations, but I think it needs to be a unified effort, and thoughtful, and planned out. So, we'll be getting together with those folks to, it's almost like a small think tank, and Lorraine's on it as well, to brainstorm around those ideas, because I don't want to just be reactive and put a Band-Aid on something, because that doesn't work. And, you know, I know districts say we're going to suspend with this, I think there's a whole lot of options, and I obviously believe that education and prevention are the biggest keys, but there's other components about access, of how this gets there, parental information, and all those things. And as a parent of an eleven and fifteen-year-old, you know, I know what it's like to be a parent, too, like, I wouldn't put anything past, kids could possibly, you know, they have the ability to do anything at any time, particularly teenagers, and, you know, it's just one of those things, that we also have to include the parents, really, and have a real discussion, because it can't be, "Oh, this isn't my kid," you know, I wouldn't do that, but this is the problem. And my biggest concern of all, is, you know, talking with Dr. McMillan, and talking with Cheryl Barzak, is, you know, smoking was almost eliminated, like, gone.
Right.
And, you know, and we have, you know, if we have forty, fifty kids addicted, making them have to smoke it between every period of Juul, what I'm saying is, we're going to have a generation of folks, and everyone knows how hard that is to quit in life, so...
As I said, I mean, I think, maybe they're not part of the working group, but I've heard this issue mostly, and I got fired up last week, two weeks ago, the kids, we've got to include the kids, and like, how are we going to empower these kids to, what's their solution? Because then, I was very focused on suspensions and consequences last time, but they're the ones that are going to help us solve this problem, because they see it, they smell it, and we know, we've talked, we've talked about this, that teachers are chasing this, sometimes they don't catch it all the time. The kids are catching it, so what can we do to empower them to come forward? So, I don't know if they're part of the working group, but they need to be part of the solution.
Well, as you were talking about the suspension, I think that's one of the things I said to the kids last week.
But what's it themselves?
I asked the students that, you know, what...
They were there last...
Yeah, no, when I asked the students, that they're going to have to be part of the solution as well.
Yeah.
And I've also, this was a big discussion, I met for over an hour and fifteen minutes with a hundred high school students, one class from every grade representative, and the same at the middle school, a hundred kids at the middle school, and, you know, we've had these discussions, and they also certainly have to play a role as well, so...
The thing Mr. McDevitt was mentioning about the detector things, it was from one of the listservs that we're on, and I'll find it, and you can send it.
I thought I heard that Masco put them in, I thought I heard that from a friend of mine, who's a Masco teacher.
There was a, I don't know if it was Channel Five?
Yeah, we've done Channel Five.
I did see that, right? I'm not, okay, okay.
It's something on the listserv, too.
It's something that I've actually looked into in the fall, September, October. I'm interested, but that's what I'm saying, there's a lot of solutionitis, and as someone who's always been kind of a fixer and going to solutions, that's not always solving what the actual problem is, or getting to a better answer to that problem.
Correct.
So, but I am, I'm interested in anything we can do to help our kids and make this a better situation.
And then, I really just kind of had one more point, I mean, I've been on the committee, I don't even know now, seven years, eight years, and we very rarely disagree. I mean, I think if you go back in our minutes, and like, I would say...
As a committee?
As a committee, you know, most of our votes are probably five-oh. I mean, that's just kind of where we are.
When we disagree, we really disagree.
And when we do, we really disagree, yeah, you and I, together. However, I mean, I think today's conversation, you know, which wasn't necessarily that long, about Columbus and Indigenous Peoples' Day, is really an important conversation for us to continue to have. And I did say that I would vote in favor of it, and I didn't vote for it, because I feel like we need to have the conversation, and that's why I want to let you know that I'm in favor of, but I'm in favor of having the conversation. And I don't remember who the woman was who came, who spoke about, just her perspective.
Kim Riordan.
Yes, it was Kim Riordan.
Kim, I thought it was Kim, but then I couldn't remember the last name. And I'm always reminded of being in my early twenties and being in England, and going through and hearing the, some of the heroes that they had in the Revolutionary War, and where they had lived, and things that they had done. And they kept talking about this great British hero that they had, and the Americans were, you know, covering the bus, and like, "Who is this, who is this?" And we kind of got to the end, and we saw his home, and it was Benedict Arnold. And it really kind of helped me understand a little bit more of that perspective that was there, and I think that it's important that we are teaching it, we're addressing it, we're doing all of that, and recognizing it as well, but I think we, as a community, need to make that decision, so, but I just wanted to share that, so...
Ms. Mabley?
Hold on a sec.
Ms. Picard?
I would just say that I was really thrilled to be welcomed at Kittredge School for understanding our differences, and I had an opportunity to be the speaker that day, to speak about hearing loss, hard of hearing, difficulty hearing, the experiences that I have, and how very, very respectful those students were, and I had an opportunity to do that at Franklin School some time ago. It's really incredible that these groups of students are so interested in that. So, again, I also, at Thompson School, got to see one of our students who actually attends the Crest Collaborative, be the speaker on autism and understanding differences. So, I, you know, I know everybody's been saying it's a great opportunity to get out there, but it's very satisfying, and it's very educational, and it's just a great way to see our students in our schools and learn a few things.
Thank you. All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, I move that we adjourn to our next meeting on February twenty-eighth at six-thirty PM at the Sargent Elementary School.
Second?
Motion by Mr. McDevitt, seconded by Ms. Mabley. I don't think there's any discussion. David?
Ooh! Excuse me.
Aye.
And aye.
Anna, bless you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.